The hour of 5:30 having arrived, the Tuesday, August 11th, 2020 Committee of the Home Meeting is now convened. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please mute your phones before you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business of equal and justice. Thank you. I would ask everyone in the audience to please mute your phones. And for those that are participating by Zoom, if you could, please mute your microphones. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Alderman Redpath. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fugienzi. Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Madam Chair, our form is present.
Okay, um, did you...
Madam Chair, this is Alderman Redpath. I'm here.
Alderman Redpath and Alderman Fugienzi are participating by Zoom.
All right.
Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Chuck, we can hear you.
Thank you.
Have a motion for approval of the Tuesday, July 28th, 2020 Committee meeting minutes.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We did receive an Office of Budget and Management contract report. Are there any questions about the report? No question? Oh, Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Chair. And this is just a clarification, because I wasn't quite sure how much of a lag is there between the contracts appear in the report and when we get to see that report? Is that standard?
Uh, it's...
I don't know.
I see Bill McCarthy is not in the chamber. Oh, you are back there. I'm sorry. You were blending in with the back wall.
That was my design.
Alderwoman, not much. We, it's, the report encompasses an entire month. Once that month passes, then Amanda Long, the purchase agent, will send that out. Like, I think she just sent this one out, what, last week? So, a few days, maybe three, four, five days.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Treasury Busher?
Thank you, Chair Turner. Also, Alderwoman Conley, when the report comes out, we run all of the vendors in the Treasurer's Office for any debt owed to the city as well.
Thank you very much. It's good to know. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions about the Budget and Management Contract Report? Okay. Treasury Busher, Treasurer's Report?
Thank you, Chair Turner. The Corporate Fund in the month of July had a beginning balance of $13,071,645. We took in total receipts in the month of July of $9,215,108. We had total disbursements of $7,828,168, which left the Corporate Fund with an ending balance in the month of July of $14,458,585. This concludes my report, Chair Turner.
Are there any questions about the Treasurer's Report? Okay, thank you. I was not made aware of any presentations tonight. Ordinances tabled are remaining in committee 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-1, uh, 2019-08, 2019-430, 2020-49, 2020-67, 2020-134, 2020-153, 2020-181, 2020-195, 2020-207, 2020-273, and 2020-289. Before I ask if anyone has anything that they would like to be removed, I would like to announce that 2020-029, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement with the Sangamon County, Illinois Board of Health for Animal Control Services effective January 1, 2020 through February 29, 2020, will remain in committee tonight. Because I know there were several people here that were interested in that, and I wanted to let you know that at the beginning of the meeting. So, that will not, will remain in committee. It will not be discussed tonight. So, are there, is, does anyone have any ordinance that they would like to have removed for consideration tonight? If not, Clerk, would you please proceed to ordinances for committee consideration?
I will. Madam Chair, what number did you say would not be considered tonight?
049.
049. Thank you. All right. CWLP, 2020-294, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 21-06-22, circuit switches and capacitor banks with Fletcher Reinhardt Company in an amount not to exceed $853,515 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-295, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 21-06-25, Stevenson Drive Radio Tower with Fast Track Telecom Services LLC in an amount not to exceed $757,650 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to second.
Second. The motion and a second for consent. Any discussion?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Chuck? I'm sorry.
Yes, Alderman Redpath. Hello?
Okay.
Is the director up there? I was gonna ask you what this tower is gonna be used for.
Okay, just a second. He's coming to the podium.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, this tower basically allows communications between our transmission and distribution facility and our generation facility. It also allows for our Itron collector, which allows, in that area, for automatic meter reading in that area. It also has traffic for, to operate our capacitor bank that's in that area as well. So, that's why we have to get it repaired.
Is, is there any more of these transmission towers throughout the city?
Um, there are a couple. I don't know how many there are, though.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-296, an ordinance authorizing a purchase from Summit Information Resources in an amount not to exceed $77,880 for upgrades to core network bandwidth and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the same amount for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to second.
Second. There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in
favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-297, an ordinance approving a proposal with Stress Engineering Services Incorporated for high-efficiency piping inspection for the Delman Tower Plant, Unit Number Four, in an amount not to exceed $101,875 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to second.
Second. There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
20, Public Safety, 2020-299, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number 1565-22431 in an amount of $12,706 from the Illinois Department of Human Resources, Division of Substance and Prevention and Recovery for the Kids Can't Buy 'Em Here Program, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in said grant funds in an amount of $8,507 for FY21 for the Springfield Police Department.
Move to second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Public Works, 2020-300, an ordinance authorizing additional relocation expenses in an amount of $1,650,000 for Quickwall Company occupying parcel SR0134 located at 1010 East Edwards Street relating to the usable Segment V of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-301, an ordinance authorizing additional relocation expenses in an amount of $560,500 for businesses occupying parcel SR0137 located at 1021 South Grand Avenue East relating to usable Segment V of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to second.
McMenamin.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-302, an ordinance authorizing additional relocation expenses in an amount of $135,000 for the businesses occupying parcel SR0135 located at 709 Barrett Street relating to usable Segment V of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Before we go on, I do want to make a clarification. So, the, the ordinance that I read earlier stays in committee, and also 2020-314 will remain in committee. So, just to clarify, 2020-314, which is the other ordinance dealing with animal control, will remain in committee.
Noted. 2020-303, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the estate Jerry L. Ballard for the purchase of real estate located at 1627 East North Grand Avenue in an amount of $31,200 in closing costs and an amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $32,700 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-304, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in an amount of $3,450 for relocation of personal property located at parcel SR0026 located at 1627 East North Grand Avenue relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project.
Move to second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-305, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Valor Brothers LLC for the purchase of real estate located at 1,000 East Monroe Street in an amount of $88,350 in closing costs and an amount of $2,500, and a total amount not to exceed $90,850 relating to the usable Segment VI of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Okay. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-306, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in an amount of $3,000 for the relocation of personal property located at parcel SR0128 located at 1,000 East Monroe Street relating to the usable Segment III of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-307, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Masonary Consultorium LLC for a purchase of real estate located at 1303, 1309, 1311, South 11th Street, and 1,007, 1,009, 1,011, 1,021, and 1,023 East South Grand Avenue in an amount of $420,000 in closing costs and an amount of $4,000 for a total amount not to exceed $424,000 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-308, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission for the performance of transportation planning work under the Technical Work Program from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021 in an amount not to exceed $39,393, MFT Section Number 20-00300-00-ES for the Office of Public Works.
Move to second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-309, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that the motor fuel tax funds in an amount of $39,393.60 may be used for the city's share for planning work outlined in the Technical Work Program as required by the 1962 Federal and Highway Act stats Springfield Area Transportation Study, MFT Section 20-00300-00-ES as amended for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-310, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW21-06-24 with Truman L. Flat and Sons Incorporated for roadway improvements, Isles, Lenhart, and Bunker Hill Roads in an amount not to exceed $885,931 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-311, an ordinance approving the preliminary plan of the North Reserve for the Office of Public Works.
Move to second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-312, an ordinance regarding the variance request of Section 153.162 pertaining to sidewalks for the North Reserve for the Office of Public Works.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2020-313, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a vacant or abandoned property on tax sales list from Sangamon County as trustee in an amount not to exceed $805 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to concern.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Finance, 2020-314, remains in committee. General City Business, 2020-315, an ordinance submitting Chapter 79, Section 79.29 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended relating to parking on public streets.
Is there an alternate?
Hold in committee.
Noted. 2020-316, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education Springfield School District 186 for the access channel.
Move to consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is there, what a difference a week makes. Is there, is there any unfinished business? Any new business?
Since the mayor's not here, with all the, the issues going on with the downtown, the 3 o'clock bar, that, all that, is there, is there any update on what, what's the plan for them? Or, because my understanding is, is there still advertising events? Or, the particular bar, you know, Mr. Zerkle, I guess if...
I was gonna say, the chief may want to address some of the issue just briefly on that, as it relates to downtown. The most recent incident that happened over the weekend is still being looked at. There is some discussion about potentially regulating a block party issue and potentially taking some action with respect to the licensee involved. However, that's still under review. And I don't know if the chief, if you have anything you really want to add to that at this point?
Is that something we can talk out here, or is that something we need to go to exec?
I think if the chief can cover just maybe the generic items, but the review process is still going on right now.
Yes, Mr. Zerkle's correct. The biggest thing right now is that we're still in the early stages of the investigation. Obviously, they can't talk about the criminal investigation. The bar did close early. It was supposed to go to 3 o'clock that night. It closed at 2. Started pushing people out somewhere around quarter till 20 till somewhere in the general area there is what we're being told. But, once everybody came out, they were all still right there. So, obviously, the, we had made contact with the leaseholder prior to that, the business owner prior to the event, out of concern due to COVID plus the other issues of the promoter being tied to potential block parties before. So, again, right now, that's where we're at as far as that. I mean, as far as anything that you or the mayor or anybody else may choose to take any action against the business owner, that's between you folks. But, once we get done, we'll have a clearer picture about what may or may not have occurred, what could be maybe improved, that kind of thing. But, I don't have those answers for you yet.
Alderman...
Follow-up?
I'm sorry, Alderman Hanauer?
The, the, because I had, I had restaurant owners, obviously, out west where, where we were in. The detail went through and checked, I think, most of them, as a matter of fact. But, my understanding was that the detail was off at midnight, and no one actually went into this bar at, after 1 o'clock, when it's gonna be busy, to, to check that. Is that, is that a correct statement? Because I've had a lot of complaints from people, well, why, why aren't these getting checked and whatnot? So...
So, basically, the compliance detail ran from 7 to about 11:30. They checked the wet bar at about 23, 10 hours. That party didn't kick off. It was supposed to go 11 to 3. So, the crowd was very light, and there was no violations noted at that point in time. That doesn't keep us from looking at other things that I'm not prepared to discuss publicly.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I said I would, I'd let people know. I would ask. That brought it to my attention. So, thank you.
Alderman Donlin?
And there may be, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was simply gonna say, there may be some additional information available later, but it's still being reviewed right now from the incident over the weekend.
Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question related to the powers of the liquor commission, commissioner or commission. Does the mayor, as liquor commissioner or the liquor commission, have the authority to, when we have, let's say, as this example, a 3 a.m. license to cut back the time or suspend the license? And, and does that also apply? Does he have that authority and the commission have that authority for 1 o'clock licenses? Just curious.
The answer to that is yes. You may recall that there was an instance sometime back where a 3 a.m. license was pulled back to a 1 a.m. license based on a set of circumstances. So, it would be my view, I think it's well-accepted both under the state law and under the, our code, that the liquor commissioner has the authority to regulate or impose summary suspensions or regulations based on circumstances or conditions. However, that then ultimately could end up in a hearing, you know, for due process reasons in front of the liquor, our Springfield Liquor Commission.
Thank you for that clarification, Counselor. Appreciate it.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes, I, you know, I received various calls about the, the, you know, incident downtown from media, from, from concerned citizens. You know, outside, like I was telling the news, you know, it's, it's very, it's very tough. We've been, you know, trying to put together game plans to slow these things down for quite some time. But, more so, what concerns me is what goes on inside. And, and, you know, we're in 2020, and, and these bar owners, they have to understand that everybody's on Facebook, everybody's on live, and we know what's going on inside. So, it more, for me, it really goes back to what we're supposed to be doing on the inside, sitting down, having our mask on, unless we're taking part in the beverage and things of that nature. And when we're enforcing those rules, then, then, then some of the, some of the things that we don't want won't come because they don't want to follow those rules. And, and I think our bar owners have to help us out with that. And, and I think we're gonna have to get tough, you know? I like to have a good time. I like to enjoy myself like anybody else, but I also want to be safe. I also want to keep our city safe. And, these bar owners know, you know, how to handle it. We can't advertise big parties like that. There's nowhere to go right now. And anytime we do it, we're gonna get a large response, especially, you know, in today's age with social media and stuff. So, we have to be careful about that, our bar owners or whoever's gonna throw these parties. They have to be ready to, to, to enforce the rules, you know, against people liking it. People ain't not like it. So, you know, as a city, we're gonna have to get tough on it. Because I'm telling you, there's no bar in town that's gonna make everybody make, wear their mask. They can't. Nobody's gonna do it after a couple shots. Nobody's gonna wear their mask. So, we gotta make a decision what we're gonna do, you know? So, that's, that's just my, my, my take on it. And, and I wish everybody the best, and we'll keep working too. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Chief. Anyone else have any new business? Okay. Clerk, let's go. Can you tell me who has signed up to speak?
Yes, Robert Henning.
Mr. Henning? Come on up. Could you please state your name and address?
My name is Robert Henning. I'm homeless. I currently stay in a tent over by the warming center. That's what I'm here to talk about today.
Okay.
On behalf of the homeless. I know there's the issue where they want us to leave because it's inconvenient for a few, we're being told. And they want us to come back down to the library. But, I would like to make a few points where it may be better for us, the city, and, if, if, if possible.
Sure.
Being at the warming center and being able to have a tent there. We have showers, the cooling part, bathroom, and we're only a few blocks from the bread line. And it gives us a chance to have a place to put our stuff. We ain't carrying it all across town and being an eyesore. And the little community that we built, you know, we watch out for each other's stuff. And we actually quarantine ourselves, too. And we're separated during this moment, you know? And, and at the, at the moment, there's actually, except for the library, there's no place else to go. And being down at the library, you know, we have to wait till 8 o'clock to come down here, sleep on concrete, carry all our stuff. And then 7 o'clock in the morning, you know, pack it all up and move wherever across town. And it's me personally, I've had three back surgeries. It's hard on me. And there's a lot of other people have problems just like me. And this offers a place, you know, where we ain't gotta, have to do that, you know? We could get up, you know, and not worry about our stuff being stolen or have to carry it across town, or it end up soaking wet if there's a rainstorm, because there's actually no cover in town for us no more, realistically. It's like, they didn't want us at the library. Now, they're calling us back to the library. And it's, everywhere we go, it's like, well, no, yeah, you know, and we don't, it's, it's, it's stressful, you know? And I also would like to make a point that this could be used as something good, like a transition to housing. You know, you have people there all day long. They scattered across the city. People could easily come talk to us about housing and other things that, you know, we need to get people off the street. I'm sorry, this is not one of my fortes as speaking. Also, and it takes us away from the library. It's an eyesore. I mean, for the tourists. And I can only imagine how much business is lost in tourism a year, because, you know, people are passed out on the church steps that Abraham Lincoln attended that people want to come and see in other parts of the city. Nobody wants to see that. And I, and I, like I said, there's no telling how much money is lost because of that. And this, this puts us away from downtown, too, 11th and Madison at the moment. But, like I said, it offers an opportunity for a transition to housing. Me personally, my situation will be fixed in a couple of weeks, but others don't have that opportunity. They don't have income or... They basically just don't know how to do it, you know? I, that's, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I had this planned. It's not going in the, you know, I wanted to. But, the library lacks comfort, you know? Sleeping on concrete is not comfortable. And the protection that they say that they offer, not really. I mean, after situations happen, they come afterward, you know? And we're right there, you know? It's the same thing over there if it happened, or over by the bread line or anything. Yeah, it's, they come afterward. So, I don't see where there's any protection there or anything. No privacy, you know? That's another thing, too. I mean, being videotaped and on camera 24 hours a day is, you know, nobody wants that. I mean, being videotaped and on camera 24 hours a day is, you know, nobody wants that. Also, we, we have quite a few females over there, and it's hard to keep, protect them. It's been hard lately, and there's quite a few of us trying to protect them. There's been some situations where females have been assaulted, and they don't report it because, you know, who's, you know, who cares about the homeless? And we have tried to move a few over there that, and protect them. It would surprise you how many number assaults have went on this summer and that are unreported. And I believe that that, having that little community right there and the protection of it, you know, helps with that situation, too. Actually, there's been five, I'll tell you right now. With that said, there's just actually no place else to go, you know? It's either there or the library. I mean, just simply no place else to go. I do have a suggestion, I mean, if I, if I may. Y'all were almost did it last year with the building, you know, y'all were gonna, I think y'all purchased the building, we're gonna move the homeless in there and make it like a little homeless community with security, medical staff, and I, I think that was a good idea. And I, I think that's what we need, you know? If even it's only a six-by-eight room or an eight-by-ten room, where people have a bed, you know, a place to store their stuff without having it be stolen every day, you know? I mean, you can't even go to the bathroom for five minutes while walking out with your bicycle stolen or your luggage, and, and don't even steal it for, you know, the value because really none of us have no value, you know? It's just done for, a lot of it just for, you know, well, to tell you the truth, I don't know. It's for, you know, sorry, I'm nervous.
Good.
But, but this as officer security, because we do watch out for each other, a little bit of stability and convenience. And like I said, it could be used as a transition to housing. I mean, that's where we're at, and, you know, not scattered across the city. And there's easy access to us, to help us, all of us. And I guess that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
I do, I do think it takes the eyesore from downtown, with some of the things I've seen myself, you know? I wouldn't come back if I seen a bunch of people sleeping on the steps of the church that, you know, Abe Lincoln was at, attended, or the library, or anything downtown. I mean, this offers a solution, temporary solution, until people are housed.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for coming. I, I, we all appreciate you coming, we appreciate your thoughts. And I, I personally, I don't think that either, either is a, is a perfect solution. I think that this is a, a problem that begs for a permanent solution, and I, and we shouldn't create a situation where people are forced to move from hither and yon like, like nomads because they have no place else to go. So, it does beg for a permanent solution, and I personally feel that the City of Springfield has an obligation to find that solution.
And we have kept it clean. And like last night, the storm, it decimated us, but we got up, cleaned it up this morning, and we fixed it. And, I mean, we're doing the best we can.
Yeah, I can, and I can, I can just imagine what, what type of situation the storm created for you last night, because I know the situation that it created for me, and I live in, in, in a house, and, and I know the situation that it created for me. So, I, my thoughts and prayers were definitely with you all last night. Alderman Conley? I'm sorry, just since I'm looking. Sorry.
Thank you, Chair. We agree with you. At least I agree with you. We want a center for health and housing where everyone can go and get their needs met, and it can be a, a community center. You shouldn't have to move around, you shouldn't have to live in tents in a vacant lot. That's your people. You're just like me. So, as a city, once and for all, we have to do something about this without fear of a lawsuit or fear of anything else. We have got to find a solution, because this is not acceptable to me.
Well, right now, what you're dealing with is, is broken down into groups, and I've been out here a year and a half, and I, if it wasn't for the people, what little they had, they helped me. And I was sick when I got out here, and because of the unfortunate situation, I was put here. And what little those people had, they helped me with until I could, I could get help and helped transition me to be homeless, because I had never been. I'm 54 years old, and it, it was a shock to me, and the fact that I was sick at the same time. But you have your mentally ill, there's, there's, there's a good portion of them that are out here, and they need help, and they don't know how. And then you got people who are here because of unfortunate situations, as myself, and then you have another group that have illnesses that are not mentally ill and just are not getting the care that they need, and it's, nor do they have the money to get off the street. And even if they do get a little bit of money, it's not enough to maintain them in a house, housing. And that, that's the problem. You can put them in there, but they still need help afterward, because they cannot maintain, because they do not have the finances to do so. You can't just put them in somewhere and just forget about them, which is what a lot of places do around here. And the conditions in a lot of places that offer to help people, male and females, aren't ideal situations, not like you think. Not when you're reminded of your situation every day and why, you know? Just a lot of people can't help it, the reason they're in the situation they are. And to remind them and to kick them while they're down, I mean, that's just, you know, you know what it is. And then you have people who have alcohol and drug problems that truly want help, but cannot get it, or, or don't know how to go about it. I personally have heard that a few places here have closed down or are closing down or hospitals, and that's the reason people are not getting the proper help that they need mentally, physically, or, you know, for their addictions. And a place that offers that, I mean, could all be done in one place, a building, six-by-eight or, you know, eight-by-ten rooms, you know, a place, a little section they call their own to keep their stuff protected and safe and to leave it behind when they want to, not have to get up seven o'clock in the morning and drag your stuff across town. They're asleep, like, no time to ever relax, even at night, because you gotta be on your feet or, or on your, on alert, because somebody gonna try to steal your stuff while you're asleep. I mean, that's the way it is. That has security, you know, you need a presence there, you need a medical staff, and that covers mental health, addiction, and physical illnesses.
That was the plan. All the above. Yeah.
And a lot of people want that out here, trust me. Don't let the actions of a few, you know, affect all of us, because I promise you, 95% of us want housing, we want a better life. We, we want, we just need to be shown how to, you know, or, you know, to, to get there, you know? I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot of good people out here that just, they just got problems, you know? And we're put here by unfortunate situations and are demoralized because there's no hope, you know, it's like, you know, there's no end in sight for them, you know? Like I said, speaking is not one of my fortes, and I'm sorry, I'm nervous, but...
Yeah. No, it's, it's, it's all good to be nervous, man. I, I can relate. But I promise you, you know, that, that we do care about you and, and, and every, I, I hate even using the word homeless, because you just are a person, a me, and, and, and everyone up here on this council, you know? We're gonna figure it out on what, on what we need to do, and we're gonna help you guys out the best we can, and, and partner with, with anybody and everybody who wants to, to be a part of the solution. Certainly, you know, what, what happens in the past, that situation's gone, I can't fix it, I can't bring it back, I wasn't here for it, but, but to vote, but, but, but right now, we're gonna work on it, we're gonna put our hands together, we're gonna get something done to, to help you guys out. Regardless of where we're at, all I ask for, especially if we're over there in that section that we're in, in, in Ten City, and I don't know where we're at with, with the police and the mayor as far as moving you guys, but wherever we're at, all I'm asking is, is, like you said, keep it clean, let's try to be peaceful, and, and you guys do that. I, I, I come over there, you guys chilling, and, and, and you do have your own community, and, you know, it's much appreciated, and, you know, you know, sorry that we're at this point, but we're gonna try to help you guys out, okay?
I'm asking, please allow us to stay until alternatives are made. Please allow us to stay until an alternative can be figured out.
Alderman.
Or, you know, something else.
Thank you. Sir, I, I know it's hard to know when someone's speaking because of these, but I, I just wanted to thank you again for taking the time to sign up to come and speak tonight. When I was coming in, there was a gentleman outside, and obviously, we're dealing with, you know, space constrictions related to COVID, and, and he was, he hadn't signed up ahead of time and wasn't able to come in. So, I hope you know that by, you, you're taking this step, you're speaking for a lot of people, and, and, and we very much appreciate you keeping those voices in our ears.
When I came homeless, you know, they were there for me, and I wanna be there for them, no matter when I'm housed, I must have been a come here for them.
I, I will tell you, when, when I talked to Erica Smith about, about, you know, the situation, she, she says it as people who are experiencing homelessness, so that we keep the people first, because, as everyone else has said, we, we are, we are all citizens of this city, and, you know, I think there, there was a lot of hope around this horseshoe last year that, that we had a, a solution, and, you know, unfortunately, things didn't fall out.
Yes, ma'am.
But there, there certainly is desire for, for a better solution moving forward, and again, I just wanted to thank you for taking the timing and speaking. I, I understand that's not everyone's strength, and it, it can be intimidating, but by stepping up, you stepped up for a, a lot of people, and, and you let us hear their voices, and, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
And the number's growing every day.
I know.
It's doubled since last year, and it's, it's getting out of control.
Well, please take care, and, and please know that, that this is not something that we take lightly.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you very much for coming. Um, the next person signed up to speak?
The next person is Jane McBride.
Okay. Next.
That's it. Madam Chair?
Is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you very much.